I will call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the representative town meeting of Darien. And I'm calling it to order. And the first item is acceptance of the agenda. Without objection, I will accept the agenda. Do you see any objections, Kate?
I do not see any hands raised. If anybody objects to the agenda, please raise your hand. You've got nothing, Seth. You're good.
Our next item is approval of the minutes of March 15. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 15?
Uh, let's see. I have Bill Smith.
Thank you. And can I have a second?
I have Barbara Thorne.
Thank you, Barbara. Are there any corrections, additions to the minutes of March 15?
I don't see any hands raised.
And are you ready to vote?
All right. Um, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, Seth, question was out there for a minute. Ninety-three percent voted, 100% voted yes.
Great, then the minutes stand approved for March 15. Next item is announcements. I have none and there are none. The next is our friend David Noff, Director of Health for Darien, has been kind enough to come back and address us again on the status of COVID-19. And we really appreciate this, David, because there's so much information out there and there's so many things going on. We just need sort of like a steady voice to keep talking to us so that we can sort of understand what it's all about. So without further ado, David, welcome and thank you.
Thank you, Seth, and thank you for those kind words. You'll note that the Corona update that is shown on the screen right now is dated April 15. It is so out of date as of today that I'm not sure that we even need to go through it. I would like to go over some of the developments from today. The governor announced basically a full rollback of all restrictions to be phased in in the month of May, beginning with the business curfew, which is currently in effect, to be rolled back to midnight and all outdoor restrictions lifted. Alcohol without food can be served outside. And there's no size, table size limit. Right now it's at eight. Beginning May 19th, while indoor masking will stay in effect, you won't have to wear, in public, wear masks outside. All remaining business restrictions will end on the 19th. And DPH will be Department of Public Health, that's the state one, will be issuing recommendations for indoor and large outdoor events. One of the governor's pronouncements today was to emphasize that there would be no restrictions for the Hartford baseball team in terms of the stadium capacity. It'll be 100%. So I anticipate that'll probably be the same with the new music venue in Bridgeport and all other activities. Still haven't really heard any specific guidance for parades and whatnot, but my guess is that we'll be able to go forward with our parade planning. I know that's a big deal. Another big development as of today is that we, you may have heard that we are offering vaccine, not we, but we worked in arrangement out with the healthcare system in Stanford, Community Health, to provide vaccine to our high school seniors. Well, we're also now being able to offer that to anyone over 16. That's because it's Pfizer and it'll be available by appointment only, May 1st, at the former Lord &amp; Taylor store in Stanford. We had hoped to be able to utilize Walgreens to provide vaccinations right at the schools, but CHC came along and they were able to do it sooner and more efficiently. So that's the route that we've chosen. On the town website is registration. So anybody who wants to get their kids, their children registered to get vaccine can go to the town website and sign up and do that. I guess, Kate, if we could scroll through this a little bit, the information here hasn't really changed. The references to sign up to be vaccinated. Many places now are offering the availability of vaccine. Not too much waiting time. We opened our clinic for the week today and there were still slots available. In past weeks, our clinics filled up almost instantly. So I'm not sure if we're reaching some kind of a saturation point and those interested in being vaccinated or not. But anyway, here's some references for you. This is also on the webpage, for the town webpage. So if you need any references, you can check there. Next slide, please. This gives you kind of a, as of last Wednesday, totals. But as of today, as of today, after we finished last week, we had given a total of 5,400 vaccine doses and completely fully vaccinated almost 2,700 people. That is quite an achievement considering our vaccinators really are comprised of volunteers. It's a tribute to the community, how people have rallied to come out and work and do this two days a week. Our greeters and screeners at the front desk, for the most part, are volunteers as well. The health department has staff of two full-time people and two part-time people. And our two part-time people, Paula is in charge of the nurses and scheduling the nurses and the vaccinators. And Nick has been doing the logistics at the clinic itself and just done an extraordinary job of organizing and orchestrating this. And by means of comparison, I said we did 5,400 doses of vaccine. When H1N1 was our concern, that year we did 450 in the whole season. We've done over 5,000 thus far. Next slide, please. Again, you could see the trends. Last week, we were down. We're hoping with being outside again. And the governor is very confident that the fact that we're going to be outdoor activities, that the spread will be declining. We're still going to be careful with respect to schools. We want to make it to the end of the year, keeping the schools open. So, you know, masking is going to be critical there. But we're watching these daily figures and hopefully they'll stay low. Next slide, please. And as you can see, so far, while we're halfway through April, but March, things went back up in March. Positive cases. You can see 1,400, almost 1,500 total cases, 928 unique households, meaning that most, a lot of houses have multiple cases. We're seeing situations where as many as four or five people in a home are contracting and getting, are positive. Currently, we're not seeing people becoming gravely ill. There's a lot of, sort of like having a cold symptoms, but not any really severe illness reports as yet because we do interview our positive cases. Next slide, please. Kind of shows the distribution of age groups. The lower right is a year ago. And the, and the upper left is kind of what it looks like now. And you could see now our 16 to 20 age group is the predominant and is the one that's showing the most, most positive cases. And it's followed not too far behind by the 50 to 59 age group, which has been consistently high. Next slide, please. Our hospitalizations, I can report and the severity, while we have a lot of cases, almost 1,500, the severity of cases hasn't been terrible. And I keep wanting to emphasize the fact that people who have been hospitalized with COVID aren't necessarily going to the hospital because they had COVID. We had one person who's a positive hospitalization who went because she was delivering a baby and was tested at the hospital and was found to have COVID. So she wasn't being hospitalized because she had COVID, but she had COVID when she was hospitalized. And, but that doesn't change the number. The statistic is there. Next slide, please. Now, it's just a distribution of those who were hospitalized and have passed away. And again, you can see that there tends to be with the elderly, which was one of the reasons why when vaccines were rolled out, it was done on an age basis to try to minimize the hospitalizations and deaths. And it seems like that plan was very successful. Next slide. And this is basically showing how many tests were done and positives and our positivity rate. And as you can see, April, we're down in a, in a nice comfortable zone, which is again, part of the reason why the governor is rolling back the restrictions and allowing for more open business opening and more activities. Welcome news to everyone, I'm sure. Next slide. Our drive-through test facility has been widely utilized, continues to be. And I think it's been another tremendous asset for the community. They're still operating five full days a week and half day on Saturday. Next slide. Next slide, please.
That's it.
Oh, son of a gun. Then I guess that's it. So we all know that Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine's been put on hold. Apparently will be, we hope to hear by the end of the week. We have used the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. We administered over 700 doses of that. It's the preferred vaccine for a lot of vaccinators, providers, because it's a one and done. The Moderna, which is what the other vaccine that we offer, you know, if we vaccinate one person, we're only halfway done. We have to do it again. It's, it's a lot of work. But so that was put on hold. We've had no reports of any illnesses associated with that other than, you know, people the day after sometimes with whichever vaccine they get, people tend to, in a lot of cases, you know, report not feeling well. But nothing that requires any kind of the hospitalization response that we've, that we've found and haven't had any reports of that. So I think we're making, making real progress here. I think we've made a lot of progress. The next couple of weeks, it'll be interesting to see what the demand of vaccine will be. And we all look forward to try to regain some sense of normalcy as we head into summer. And with that, I'll take any questions that anybody might have and try to answer them.
I see Mike Wheeler with his hand raised.
Yes, I got an email a couple of days ago from Everpoint Health pitching me on quantifying your immune response to COVID-19 response vaccine and essentially telling me how long my vaccine is good for. I haven't heard anyone else promote something like this. I wondered if you knew what it was about.
I have no idea. I'll have to check with them to see what it is they're promoting. I have not heard.
I'll forward you the email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Pesci-Grey. Laura Pesci-Grey. You're muted. You have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you. Um, do we have an understanding of like how many, what percentage of seniors have been vaccinated? Or has, is there a way of knowing that? People over 65, club?
Yeah, according to our data and the state data, we're well over 80%. It's hard to get a hard, you know, a real hard figure on that. But what we did was we went through voter lists and made phone calls. And, you know, we, we went looking and it was a very aggressive approach to try to get those folks vaccinated. And, you know, every once in a while, still, we'll be contacted by somebody who somehow didn't get the message before. But honestly, I think we've done a really good job of reaching out to a very high percentage. The exact percentage, there's really no way of knowing that.
Right. And, and did you ever, did you find that there's a certain percentage that can't physically get to a location? Is that, I don't know. I actually just saw that they have, they, I mean, not that we're going to be able to do that, but a van, like a traveling van or like somebody that could go to, I mean, I don't know, nursing homes, pretty much, they, they facilitate that process, right?
Nursing homes have vaccinated all the residents, yes. And as far as any homebound are concerned, we've actually gone out in conjunction with the Human Services Department and our nurse. And we've, we've actually delivered vaccine to homebound.
Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah, thank you. We've done a lot of, we've done outreach to try to have people recall us if they're homebound. The state has done an aggressive marketing campaign to homebound. And, you know, again, through our Human, Human Services Department who work with these seniors and the seniors and the senior center, we've, we've actually just gone out and done it.
Amazing. Thank you so much, David.
You're welcome.
Jim Cameron.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. David, congratulations on an extraordinary job.
Thank you.
It looks as if we're going to be awash in vaccine shortly. Has there been any guidance from the CDC on the utility once you've received two doses of, let's say, Moderna, getting a Pfizer chaser?
They're still advising not to mix the vaccines. So that's, that's, that's the guidance we've had so far. So, you know, if we're talking about a booster in the fall, is what they're talking about. And I, I don't know if at that time it matters which one you get. I'm sure we'll hear more from the CDC as, as that time gets closer.
And are you planning? Is there, is the town health department planning to handle boosters in the fall for either one?
If, if that's what is, if that is what is needed, then that is what we'll, we'll do.
Bless you, David. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Barbara Thorne. Barbara went away. Shannon Sillsby.
Hi there, and, and thank you. I echo thanks to you, David, for the great work you've done. Wanted to get your point of view on the cases popping, particularly at our high school prior to break. And just as this meeting started, you know, the latest update came through from our tireless team of nurses at the school district. Another eight cases. What are you looking at as far as trying to see that kind of get under control? You know, what can you, what can you share with us as to, you know, what we can do as a community besides mask and distance to, you know, really see that get down to a more comfortable level? Kids are fatigued, teachers are fatigued, parents, your families are fatigued. Just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Well, you know, I mean, according to our nurses and, and follow-ups and interviews with positive cases, you know, the kids aren't getting terribly sick for the most part. And honestly, I, this is an, you know, I can't, I haven't directly interviewed the kids. And, you know, I, I don't have the kids in the school. But I think they're not taking it terribly seriously as far as the masking and distancing and partying or not partying and, you know, riding in the same car. And, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, it's kind of like, well, yeah, you know, we got a cold and it wasn't the worst thing that's ever happened to me. And, you know, it's, I, I don't, I don't know, you know? And I don't know how you would actually tackle that problem to have it go to zero because we're aggressively looking for something here and we're finding it. So to, to actually get it under control and get, you know, as you say, with the fatigue factor, I don't think that's going to happen, frankly. I'm looking forward to summer and being outside where the risk of transmission has been greatly reduced. And, and I guess we'll look towards what happens next fall when we go back inside.
Lisi Yarnell.
Hi, congratulations, David. I think it's been a phenomenal effort on everybody's part that works with you. And I'm thrilled that I live in Darien when I look at the numbers. Couple of questions that maybe you did say and maybe I didn't hear. If outdoor facilities are going to be open, does that mean swimming pools? And, and, you know, both public and or private sort of places like that?
Yes.
Okay, and then what? I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I was gonna say that some part B to that is what happens to those that are attached or associated to some sort of fitness facility? Are the indoor parts of that then still going to remain on, you know, schedules and not limited numbers of people?
According to the governor's press, press conference today, he's talking about complete rollback of all business restrictions with further guidance to be given by the Department of Public Health over the next couple of weeks because this will happen, begins on May 1st and continues through the month of May to the 19th. So my understanding, and if I just, you know, I, I listened to him and I saw his, the summary, and it talks about all businesses. Now, I would anticipate the all business being gyms as well. But the details, the devil's in the details, so we'll see.
Okay, thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
There's one thing I want to tell you how much I appreciate your kind comments. This has been a true team effort. There have been a lot of people who've contributed to make this successful. And, you know, I have to thank, as you said, the community for coming out the way they have and helping out in the volunteer efforts that have been done from even the beginning back a year ago when we had a group of, of folks who are seamstresses donating masks back when masks weren't available. The community's been phenomenal from the beginning and I need to compliment everyone involved. Thank you.
Seth, I don't see any more hands raised.
I just had one, David. Is there, is there any clarity on versions of the virus? We keep hearing there are different iterations of it. And has it changed to the point where now even you're getting vaccinated with the same fluid? But the virus is shifting? Or is there, are there a whole bunch of different kinds of viruses floating out that are related? Or it's, it's hard to determine, you know, where we are reading what's available, you know?
Well, you're in the same boat I am. You know, I read the same.
Never mind.
No, the truth, truth of the matter is, is that I'm reading that the reassuring statements are that the vaccine is working even with the variants. So that's, that's the message that's being sent. You see it, I see it. I don't see anything any differently than you. But, you know, let's cross our fingers and hope that this virus doesn't mutate to the point where it starts evolving beyond being protective or our vaccines being protective against that vaccine, that virus.
Thanks. Didn't mean to roll a loaded question at you, but I don't know, maybe you had access to some, something. Anyway, thank you very much, David. Appreciate this great report and.
You're very welcome.
What you're doing.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is 21-9, Consideration and Action on Acceptance of a Gift of $45,000 for Pickleball Courts. Speaking on behalf of the Park and Recreation Committee, Adele Coniff, the chair.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Adele.
You know, when you push that button and then it doesn't go from red to green for a while, you wonder. There you go. Adele Coniff, District 3, RTM Parks and Recreation Committee. I'd like to move 21-9, Consideration and Action on Acceptance of a Gift of $45,000 and Appropriation of $45,000 to establish four pickleball courts at Cherry Lawn Park. Do I have a second?
I see Patty Baumgartner.
Thank you, Patty. With no objection, I'd like to waive the reading of the resolution. At present, there are four tennis courts located at Cherry Lawn Park. Three courts are located near the playgrounds and one is near the entrance to the park. The solitary court has been used in recent years for playing pickleball by dividing the court in two and bringing in temporary pickleball nets. Pickleball is a paddleball sport that combines elements of badminton, table tennis, and tennis. Two to four players use solid paddles made of wood or composite materials to hit a perforated ball over a net. The court size is similar to a badminton court with a net and rules similar to tennis rules. The sport was invented in the 1960s and is one of the fastest growing sports in the country. Demand for playing time in Darien has grown as pickleball's popularity has increased. At their meeting on December 16th, the Parks and Recre- 2020, for the Parks and Recreation Commission unanimously approved the proposal to convert one tennis court at Cherry Lawn, which is currently being used as two temporary pickleball courts, to four permanent pickleball courts. And approved resident Sean Shay's offer to spearhead a fundraising effort to pay for the project. The project bids were opened on March 3rd and the lowest bidder was Hinding Tennis LLC with a bid of $35,750. The bid included the existing surface being cleaned and cracks patched, four permanent pickleball nets and posts, and a small dividing fence in the middle of the court where the old tennis net was installed, as well as repainting and relining for four pickleball courts. Also recommended for the project, though not included in the base bid, was to furnish and install right-way crack repairs with a two-year warranty on cracks for an additional $3,200. The bid alternate was for additional fence. The bid alternate was for additional fence work costing $4,850. The added fence work would cut down the existing fence post to four feet high, reinstall the top rail and paint all sides of the fence posts and top rails black. Also included was removing existing fence fabric, disposing of the fabric, and installing new four-foot black final one and three-quarters mesh fence fabric. The court conversion plus sealant and extra fence work brought the total cost to nearly $45,000. The Board of Selectmen reviewed the gift on March 8th and approved a motion to accept donations and a special appropriation request for the pickleball courts for up to $45,000, contingent upon the ability to raise not less than $40,000. The Selectmen thought it prudent to include construction contingency dollars in the funds raised. The Board of Finance approved an appropriation of $35,750 on March 16th for the conversion and amended that appropriation to $45,000 on April 6th as funds raised had exceeded $40,000. The fundraising total stands at $45,000, which will pay for the conversion as well as the additional fence work and sealant. At present, the existing pickleball courts are available on a first-come, first-served basis and change on the hour. With the new construction, two of the courts will remain first-come, first-served. And the Park and Rec Commission plans to offer two courts that can be reserved in a block, advanced reservations similar to tennis court reservations format. And we'll have a lottery for that with an advertised deadline. The fee for pickleball court, the fee for pickleball court block reservation is yet to be set by the Park and Rec Commission. These fees will add to the town's revenue. The RTM Parks and Recreation Committee met on April 7th with 11 of 15 members present, constituting a quorum, and unanimously voted to accept a gift of up to $45,000 and appropriation of up to $45,000 for the conversion of one tennis court to four pickleball courts at Cherry Lawn Park. The RTM Parks and Recreation Committee felt the new pickleball courts will be a great addition to Cherry Lawn Park and thank all those who worked hard fundraising as well as all who make contributions to this project. We ask for the RTM's support for the acceptance and appropriation of this gift for pickleball courts. Thank you.
Thank you, Adele. Now, speaking on behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, Jack Davis, Chair.
I'm Jack Davis, Chair of the RTM Finance and Budget Committee. I'm going to try and make this short. So we agree with everything Adele just stated in the Park and Rec Committee report. The only thing I want to add is that typically only the Board of Selectmen and RTM need to approve acceptance of gifts to the town in excess of $10,000 at the current, that's the current level. If the gift requires the town to effectuate and spend the monies received, an appropriation to spend the funds raised by the gift is required. In the case where an appropriation is required, the Board of Finance must authorize, although said authorization is not an approval of the acceptance of the gift. Such was the case with this gift and the Board of Finance approved an appropriation for $45,000 as was mentioned on their April 6 meeting. The RTM F&amp;B Committee met on April 12th and voted unanimously to accept the gift, authorize the appropriation not to exceed $45,000, and to thank the donors who contributed to the pickleball and recommend that this pass the entire RTM. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jack. Are there any other committees that wish to report? Let me know, Kate, if you see any hands.
I am not seeing any hands.
Okay, town officials?
I don't think there are any appropriate, well, we have one Selectman.
Any town official wish to speak?
Selectman Newman is the only town official present. I don't know if she wishes to speak.
You can't see her hand?
No, they don't get hands.
Oh, all right, well, I don't. So how, how would they, do they have access to the mic? Can they turn the mic on or?
She does not wish to speak.
Oh, okay, fine. I just don't want to leave anybody out here. Anybody from the floor of the RTM?
Clara Sartori?
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me? Okay, two questions. One, I know that Adele said that a gentleman sort of promoted the fundraising. So did all the funds come from individual donations? Or did any organizations donate money? And the other question is, do you have any idea what the maintenance of the pickleball courts will be? What cost, what will be the cost of it?
I, this is Adele. I don't know the statistics on the folks that gave the money. And I don't know anything in particular that would cost more for maintaining a pickleball court than would have cost to maintain the tennis court that used to be there.
Okay, so then the town will take over maintenance once the pickleball court is installed. Is that right?
Correct. This is again, that's what a gift is all about. The town, it's up, the Parks and Rec will take care of the courts just like they do our tennis courts.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Patty Baumgartner has her hand raised.
Patty?
I concur with Adele what she said about Parks and Rec taking over the maintenance. They don't expect a lot of maintenance. It's not like it's fields where you have to constantly, you know, cut the grass and seed it, et cetera. And Clara, I just wanted to answer your question from funding. What Sean Shay and others had told me that were involved, key fundraisers, were that all of the funds were raised by individual donations. And then they had one large donation of $10,000 from the Darien Athletic Foundation that helped to put them over the hump. And the DAF had been the clearinghouse for them to do the 501(c)(3), so it could be a tax deduction. So that was a wonderful thing that they also chose to help them and the town get over the hump to the big number. Thank you.
Others?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, members of the public?
We don't really have, yeah, reporters. It's just the RTM.
All right. Then are we ready to vote?
Okay. I will send out the poll.
Thanks.
Okay, with 98% of those present voted and it's 100% yes.
Oh, that's wonderful. Then the motion passes. And I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Okay, hang on a second. Michael Cortez?
And do I have a second?
Lisa Yarnell?
Thank you, Lisa. Okay. Go ahead and hold away.
Yep, hang on a second. Well, with people leaving, 90% of people have voted and there's, somebody wants to stay, but 99% have voted yes.
In that case, the meeting is adjourned.